Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. This is the time for the public forum. The public is permitted to address the City Council on any items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The City Council may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the council with an item not on the agenda? Hearing nobody, we'll move on to the City Managers' Report.
Hello, council. Got a few reports, updates today. So, in terms of the roadways, Dan and I were, Dan LaFontaine and I, were at the Technical Advisory Meeting for ACTC last week. Again, I mentioned it before, but we need to get ready. They're, they're starting to solicit, update their list of eligible projects for funding. It's due in August, so we have a little bit of time, but want to make sure we have a few street projects on that list. And then also, you know, we've talked about go-for-flat several times, and kind of the expense of fixing that. Some residents have been asking if we could do speed tables, which are different than speed bumps. They're, they go up and they're flat. So, that's just a, kind of a topic being discussed. So you guys might hear about it out in the community. I don't think we've really done speed bumps in town, so I'd be interested in your feedback, or what do you think of that idea? But basically, you know, it's a long road, and you can, you can put speed tables that would try to slow people down a little bit. In terms of the budget, again, the main thing has been moving on to this new software system. You know, again, the whole process is probably going to take six months, kind of midsummer, but we're starting to export data. And they're starting to pull it into their system to kind of move forward on the configuration. In terms of wastewater activities, we had an ARSA meeting last Thursday. It was the first time with the two new county supervisors. So they actually got the same update that you got in your last council meeting about the water board balance. But it was also kind of a good introduction for them to ARSA. Dan Epperson, though, you know, from my own, very up to speed on wastewater and ARSA, so. And then Logan Carnell's, you know, interested in kind of ramping up. You know, we were, we're starting to prepare a request for qualifications. So this would be putting out the bid for firms that would be interested in constructing a new wastewater plant. So, you know, we're having some internal meetings, but, you know, that's kind of the next step would be to start to put that out. And then we engaged California Consulting, which is one of the largest companies that helps cities get grants. We had a good meeting with them, and we're starting to actively look at grants in different areas that we could be applying for. And then...
Can I ask you a question on that? I'm wondering about the grants now, and I can't recall exactly. Was, was there a budgeted position or a part-time position where a person might come in? And once we've kind of identified some possibilities, help us get those things written and...
Yeah, there were, there were two things. There was some money for a consultant, which is what this is.
Okay.
And then there was kind of a, kind of a Jody replacement, can help in a lot of different areas.
Okay.
You know, with these grants, there tends to be a lot of paperwork and reporting. The grant company will help, help with the grant application. So, it can be a combination.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there a priority list of where these grants will be applied? What, in terms of which projects?
Yes, I mean, it's kind of a combination of factors. How likely are we to get the money? How much administrative overhead is involved? What level of match there is? So, you know, we're, we're taking that CIP plan that we talked about. You know, wastewater is kind of at the top of the list, but if they tell us that there's a grant that, you know, 80% of the people apply, get the money, and you don't have to file any reports, then we're going to go for the money.
Are the, are these project-specific grants, though? I mean, the grants, okay, this grant has to be used for...
Yeah, they all are.
This, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why I was wondering, the grants that are being sought after now, is, are they, is there a priority in terms of projects?
I mean, again, it's our city priorities, so streets, wastewater, some park stuff, you know, if we can get help with the bathroom at Bryson Park. So we're taking our projects that we know of, and we're looking at the available grants. We're saying, where do they match up? You know, one area that's kind of, there are things where you need to have a plan that lists projects to be eligible for certain grants. So Dan and I are kind of looking at each other, saying, do we have the time to, to work on like a climate action plan, as an example, right? We don't have one. If we had one, we'd be eligible for certain kind of grants. There's a fire mitigation plan that, the county has one for the upper county, but they don't have one for our area. So, we could get money to write that plan, but we can't use that grant to apply for things because we don't have a plan. So, there's some things like that, but mostly they're very specific. You can apply for money for this use. And then this last, this last one under wastewater, I don't know if you guys noticed what was going on up by ACTC, but that's actually our project. This is part of the Pine Woods closeout, where the rancheria is kind of back and re-engaged, kind of completing this project. So, we've been talking to them for some time. Crystal, the CEO over there, has been really good. We've been meeting every other week lately. And, you know, they have to complete some work, they have to close out the, the project itself. And then we need to test and certify that everything's working. And they also have to deliver the easements, so that we can totally use this line.
So does it, in fact, provide additional flow from that area over to the wastewater plant?
It doubles the capacity.
It doubles the capacity?
Yeah.
Okay.
For all of Martel, basically.
Yeah.
That's the, the road that just stops.
Yeah. Yeah, the building is on the right side of that sidewalk.
I was standing in the, I'm standing in the ACTC parking lot, looking, yeah. And then, on the economic development front, we're just waiting to hear back about our grant application from the end of last year. They had over 50 applications, I think they were surprised, so they're still sorting through them. And then Claire can provide a lot more details, but Duck Race planning is well underway at this point. And then, we're trying something new on the planning area. They might have described this to you guys before, but whenever we get a development submission, it gets routed to about 13 different people. Typically, that's been done over email. Some people respond, some people don't. It can take a long time. A month could go by, and then we get feedback from somebody, and the developer has to go change their application, and then we have to reroute it to everybody again. So for a couple of larger submissions, we're, we're calling a Technical Advisory Committee meeting, and getting those 13 people in a room all at once, so everybody can provide feedback. And hopefully, we can be a lot more consistent in how we provide feedback.
That's kind of new and old. I think we used to do that.
Yeah. We haven't done it in a while, I don't think.
Tom, the upside of that is obvious to me. Is there a downside?
I don't think so. I think we're just, we're reserving it for large projects, we're not going to do it for a...
Right, fair enough.
Single-family home.
No, it seems like a, a smart process.
Went to a meeting last week with Acro, with all the city managers, and I told Julia about it today. It's going to be coming to the Acro Board, but very much like ACTC, Acro has impact fee money. It's been sitting there for a while. And the new Acro Director is basically like, we should be prioritizing projects and handing out some of this money. It turns out they have what they called old money and new money. And I believe the old impact fees were assigned to regions of the county. So there's like $90,000, it's supposed to come to Sutter Creek area. And then the newer money is, is more competitive, it's just a lump sum, and then they need to prioritize projects and decide how they're going to hand out money. Just like our own impact fees, it's supposed to be kind of new, expanded capability that would handle growth. So, you're not supposed to use it for maintenance of an existing facility, but if you expand capacity... I think so, because right now, we effectively have zero. So if we add a functioning bathroom, we've expanded capacity.
Right.
Yeah. That's, yeah, so we're looking at that, and potentially the path into town is like the top two. And then the lodging business district is going to the county supervisors next week. So we'll see. I don't, we provided all the data we, we could, and you guys have voted to support it, so we'll see how it goes.
Are they still feeling fairly confident about that?
You know, I think they're trying to get people to go to that meeting next Tuesday to show some support. So, last, last time on the Vintners, even though they had the votes, the, they said that they seemed to pay a lot of attention to how many people were in the room at the time, so.
Yeah, I was at the Tourism Council meeting today, and they're definitely encouraging people to go and support it, because they felt with the Heritage Wine District, there was a lot of sway, just from the people in the room and the feedback. And they were, specific supervisors were citing, like, they didn't necessarily, wasn't as important to them, the vote from the people involved as to the constituents that came out. So if people are in support and can speak, they would appreciate that.
And then, kind of a slow part of the year after all the holiday events, but some, have some events coming up in April, with the Duck Race on the 26th. And then in terms of your meetings, so talking to Derek today, I think the best way to do this is next, or next Monday council meeting day, we're going to start at 3:00 with a special council meeting that will be talking about our annual priorities. We also noticed the, the ACE's, you know, multi-year rate increase. So that, that was already, went out in the mail, that it was going to be that evening. So at 6:00, we will end the special meeting and start a regular meeting, which should be very short. That would be the only item on it, will be the, the 218 public hearing.
Okay.
So, don't get confused, see two meetings? Yeah, we'll do it all here.
Yeah.
This is Zoom, yeah.
Because you're not there.
Oh, the camera stopped?
We broke the camera.
I didn't know what you meant by broadcasting. I will take a look at that in a second. The camera freezes sometimes. Yeah, I mean, just to give it, it's like probably 3:00 to 6:30. And then on the 17th, we're planning to have a Joint Council Planning Commission item. A potential approval of the RFQ. I've asked Acro if they'd like to come in and give you guys an update presentation. And then we'll, hopefully, we'll have our long-range financial forecasts as we start to, to work on the budget. And then March 3rd, I'm sorry, I got into there twice. March 3rd is actually the joint session, and supposed, should have deleted it on the 17th. And we'll kind of keep with the theme of planning, we'll do our housing element update as well. That's it, that's my update.
Questions for Tom?
Tom, was there any additional fallout or discussion about the letter that you received vis-à-vis Planning Commission and us working together? Any update on that or anything?
No. And, yeah, even before that letter, you know, we really haven't had community feedback as part of the packet. So you may have noticed, I put several emails. If emails come in generally to the website or to the council...
Right.
It'll be part of the packet.
Okay.
The public have any questions on the City Managers' Report? Okay. Presentation, that's the old one. Approval of minutes from January 6th.
I just have one clarification, Tom, on those minutes. I know you test me every two weeks, but this isn't a typo, I don't think. It's just, on the, in the packet, on page seven, at the top, on item B, it talks about the pathway to town, but it doesn't tell us what end of town, and I just think we ought to be clear that we're talking about Mount Pleasant and Sutter Oaks versus the other side of town on that particular issue.
Okay.
Thank you. Otherwise, if nobody else has anything, I'd move to approve.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. Nothing on consent?
Sorry, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
I did. Dan, Julia, and then I abstained.
Okay.
The administrative agenda, A, is the local use and transaction tax planning. Want to start us off, Tom?
Yeah, so hopefully, this was, was clear. You know, really, the idea tonight is to have a discussion about the allocation of the local transaction use tax. We tried to lay out kind of several dimensions. If, if you guys had other areas you also thought needed clarification, I mean, this is a good time to bring it up. Hang on one second. No, I, I don't think I'm going to get the camera back, but I'm just going to bring up the... Yeah, so I think kind of these three big buckets at the top. Kind of allocation of funds, oversight, kind of frequency review, and then, you know, a lot of details about how an oversight committee would work, how they'd be selected, what's their scope of responsibility. So I guess, kind of, kind of an open-ended meeting, it's really a, a lot of, I think, discussion for the council. And I'd suggest maybe we go topic, topic by topic.
I agree, let's take it bucket at a time and start a discussion on the allocation of funds with the, do you want to... End goal here is to have guidelines that we would adopt. How would they be adopted? Because it's the actual budget forming where we, you know, allocate the funds.
Yeah, I mean, as I thought about the allocation, I think you guys could be very specific. Like, like we talked about under the CIP, I had thrown in a strong number, and it said 75% to streets. You could be that specific. You could be more general, you could say we want to prioritize streets, we want to also fund these other things, and come back to us with a budget proposal, and, you know, approve it then.
Right, so this, this number we come up with is what staff would use as a guideline when doing the first draft budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And then the other thing, point, I thought, you know, if you want to make a policy, you know, whatever you guys say, future councils could change. And so you could also specify that the policy comes back to council annually, or every other year, you know, whatever you'd like.
That's actually part two, though.
In a different bucket, that is, yeah.
You got out of our first bucket.
Sorry, yeah. Some of it's kind of related.
Of course.
The more specific you are, you probably would review it more often.
Why don't we start the conversation on the allocation of funds with the council? Then we'll get feedback from the public and talk about it some more. So, any volunteers? Julia?
One is, I, I like the layout, Tom, that you presented here in the packet, and then also the information from the voter priorities. And so I think it's important that we pass this with voter approval, but also voter confidence that we would follow also kind of with, along with the community wishes. So I'm thinking...
Sorry to interrupt, I did want to point out that, yeah, we did do that survey, but we did it very early. We did it in March, so I know you guys, a lot of you guys were out talking to voters, so I would factor kind of both things.
Yeah, and, and in, in reading through that, I'm wondering if it would still be the same, if we did it again today, knowing that it passed, what the, what the response would be. But that's, that's beyond. I like in, on page nine, where it said the council should consider multiple needs of the city. You know, the funding for streets. I think that primarily is, at least from my opinion, how we presented this to the, to our community, to our residents, with the wildfire risk, and then looking at the matching grants. And in my opinion, those, those three are our top three. I'm uncomfortable, I think, a little bit with attaching an actual percentage, unless that percentage could be reviewed more than just annually. For example, if we're talking about, you know, wildfire risk or funding for streets, and then we have a major, you know, blowout in a storm drain, you know, are we going, nope, we, we can't use it, because it's got to go for this. Claire made a, made a good point in an earlier discussion, that often the projects come to us and are selected for us. We always don't get to do that. So I want to make sure that, for me, it's important not to have anything more than a really general broad, if we're going to allocate funds, any, a general broad percentage. Because I just, I anticipate that there will be surprises that we wish we had the money for.
Thanks, Julia. Next.
I'd be happy to...
Dan?
To talk for a minute. So, yeah, I think I agree with Julia in that it's really important to acknowledge that when we did the outreach to the community, the repairs of the streets was the number-one priority. And a lot of the concerns that we ran up against is, well, how do we know that money is going to be utilized for that? And so we put this committee notion together to make sure that the community and the people who live here can be comfortable with how those dollars are being spent. Four months ago, when I was thinking about that, I thought, I was thinking more in terms of percentages. Well, in order to do that, I want to make sure that there's, you know, 80% of the money is dedicated to streets and this and that. The more I thought about it, the more I land in more of a directional policy that says, yes, the number-one priority are streets. And then each year, as we did the budget process and invited the Oversight Committee in, we would talk about specifically, what would that mean this year, based on what's going on in the city? So the priority always being streets and roads. But the flexibility to do, as you say, Julia, and to manage the money where it's most needed, with the community oversight and, and that type of thing. So I liked that recommendation, Tom, on the policy being more directional and creating that budget on an annual basis. So that's my initial thought about that.
Susan or Jim?
I, I agree with Dan.
Yeah, I agree too. And then we can prioritize the money and look at projects and number values on that case, or year-by-year basis. And then, like Julia said, with the wildfire planning as well. And especially if it helps us qualify for grant money.
Right. Right.
I, I agree that, you know, these are all capital improvement kind of categories. And I really appreciate having some amount of it targeted to go to the matching grant fund reserve, because we don't know when we're going to find those grants, and we want that cash so we could get them. But also, while I think we need to commit to the first priority being streets and roads, I know we need to commit to that. Part of what we talked about in doing this is, when we have the money, we'll have the ability to do things completely and do the storm drains with the road, which might have some sewer pipes underneath it and whatever else. And when we find a project that, you know, we can do more for our buck, it's going to fall into some of these different categories. And, you know, along the same lines, we could be doing some park facility-type work that ends up being fire mitigation work. So I don't want to be too tied down to the percentages. And then what Julia said, we had talked about earlier, is, at least in my experience here, the projects find us. And, not to say that the staff or anyone else imposes them on us, but more like Mother Nature. You know, we have a sinkhole or a culvert fail or something, and then we're going to have to do work in that location. And if we have this money, we could do the whole work there. Might not be top of our list for the improvement, but we're there anyway, so we'll be able to do more for the money. So, whatever we write up, I don't think it needs to be hard percentages, but I think that the priority and the majority needs to go to streets and roads, and then the rest into capital buckets. So how you'd like us to do that? But first, we'll bring it to the public.
Yeah, each bucket, we'll invite the public to respond to those ideas about that.
Did anyone in the public have a comment on this first part? So what we're talking here is not the formation of the committee yet, we'll, we'll do that in a minute. But the general allocation of funds, which of course, our budget is our appropriation of funds, and we do that every year. So this is the, the number that the, the staff will consider when they make the draft budget that will then come to us for approval. We record the meeting, so you do have to use the microphone, thank you.
Is it working? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed the earlier public comment period, should get here on time, I guess. Brian Combs, 284 California Drive. I'm now a six-month resident of Sutter Creek, but I've been coming here for half a century. Susan's my neighbor. And anyway, my comments on this is, whatever you can do to emphasize fire management. I understand in this county, in this city right now, abatement. You can be a scofflaw for five years before there's any bite to the abate process. And whatever you can do to improve and force people to get rid of their fuel loads through your city budget and stuff like that. I mean, pothole removal is nice, but you know, town ain't there, I don't care about the potholes, all right? I like to see my town exist and last into the future as it has for over a century and a half. So again, I would advocate a higher percentage of your allocations, so let's keep the fire risk down here. LA is a good example of what happens when you ignore the problem. And they suffer greatly for it, and I hate to see Sutter Creek end up in the same boat, okay? That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Albear Sutter Creek. And I didn't really expect to talk.
You always say that.
But I was one of those people on the committee, and I went out to the community, and I told them what the priorities were. And they said, it's really easy to get that fund of money, and all of a sudden, you're siphoning it off to this, that, and the other thing. And the priority item, all of a sudden, doesn't have the money for the expenditure. I like the percentage idea. And if you have those other problems come up, then find the source for that. I don't know what that source is going to be. Maybe it's going to be another proposition. And the fire abatement, I totally understand. Our daughter lost her house in Pacific Balancing, so I totally understand that. Our daughter lost her house in Pacific Balancing, so I totally understand that. But I also feel like I've, I've put my name out there and my word out there with these different groups that I talk to. And a lot, and there was a pushback because they said, this is what's going to happen. It's going to get siphoned off, and I would hate to see for that, for that to happen.
Thank you, Al.
So I, I think you guys are all aware, but you know, even though it's fantastic this past, we're not going to have enough money from one year necessarily do a project. So again, I, I think those are both great points from the public. I would just say, what we're really talking about is a reserve strategy. And-
For this initial year, you mean?
I mean, ultimately, it's all general fund reserves. So we could say X dollars are reserved for streets. And it's still the general fund, and if an emergency popped up with a sinkhole or something physical like that, you know, there could be an emergency change. But, and then the other thing I just want to say is, you know, in terms of the wildfire, I think what we're talking about from the city's perspective is, is vegetation management. It's really the city's primary role, separate from the fire district.
You're talking about vegetation management on our own property? And not enforcement on other people's property or both? Because I think they're two separate-
Yeah, I mean, we've already said we want to change our ordinance with enforcement. And then making sure we take care of our own property.
Do we have fire, like, plan, a plan though? Because, I mean, it's a miracle more people didn't die in Los Angeles. And like with regard to evacuation and routes and working with the fire department is, I mean, since I've been on the council, we haven't really discussed it. Other than like how people would be alerted. And like, and then have we worked with the fire department? Because you know, there's a whole lot of civic stuff coming down in LA. Finger pointing the mayor should have done this or that, or the fire chief. And have we had that discussion? Like, are we-
Yeah, I mean, there is the county's office of emergency services, there's emergency plans. And there's, you know, evacuation routes and all that kind of thing. And it looks like Jim wants to add-
I was just gonna say, there are evacuation route maps. But I think it should be all revisited regularly with the involvement of the fire district because-
And probably the police too, just so that everyone's on the same page.
All your first responders.
Maybe, Tom, I think we're a little off topic. But OES is redoing kind of, or not redoing, but they're reevaluating everything. I know I'm on those emails and our staff is participating and Dominic's participating. So maybe at an upcoming meeting, you can update us on that?
Yeah.
Sound good?
I, I have to say, thank you, Al, for bringing up a point. And, and I, all of a sudden, I kind of did some internal math. I've never really been good at math. The concept of having the percentages, even though broad in general, might make it easier to be more accountable for the funds that come in and clarity to what they're actually going to be used for, rather than directional. Although that was my first instinct as well. But I can see that maybe a broad percentage kind of approach to the funds. So when it comes to transparency and the committee comes and says, okay, where are we at? Where, you know, kind, where are we kind of putting the money? We would be able to say, this is what we have in actual dollar amounts for roads. This is what we have for actual dollar amounts for fire mitigation hazard. And this is what we have in these other three buckets. I, I can see the benefit that it might be easier to, to deal with. And they, they could be adjusted on an annual basis. But I think there is some advantage to-
I think the downside to that is it would take longer for us to be able to do everything. You know, if you're saving in all the different buckets. But to, to Al's point and my own clarification, I understand your concern, Al, I was with you. But so long as we're all in agreement on the buckets, you know, I don't think any of this discussion is about siphoning this money off to some other type of program or admin or cost. You know, we're talking about improvements. We're, the list here is, you know, streets and roads, streets, storm drains, vehicle reserve, which came from the, the survey, but we already have a program for that. So in my mind, it wouldn't be on here. And matching grant fund reserve. So fire mitigation, you know, is an improvement that could be added to that. But if we're saying within these buckets, you know, the first priority is streets and roads and we're not adding random buckets that, we all know what they are, we heard them when we were campaigning for this measure. I think that alleviates some of the, the concern. They're all agreed upon priorities. We're just ranking the priority of them.
Yeah, and to reiterate what you said with regard to the storm drains, if we have a project and it's a street project and we know there's a problem with the drain, we're not going to go ahead and focus on the street, not fix the drain. We have to do it, and then I'll save from the general fund long-term.
When you say streets and roads, in my mind, that includes any drainage issues of the street and roads that you're working on. Does it need to be-
Yeah, I guess the clarification there was like, like the ACTC funding was just for repaving. We would have to pay for actual pipe for a storm drain. You know, obviously you pave the roads so that the road drains well, but if you have to replace something underground.
Which, another thought is, we, we need to remember that we, we use fun, we don't, we've never had this, this measure P money before, and we've done street and road projects. So this is supplemental to what, what we are currently doing. And I just want to keep that in mind. It's not, I don't want to see, now that we've got measure P money, that that's going to somehow divert or make the money that we're using now for streets and roads available for something else. It needs, they need to remain as funds for streets and road projects.
Those that get more involved in ACTC, I think we were, we were very fortunate to get that money for Eureka Road. You know, the vast majority of the money goes to county roads. We were the first ones to finish a project, even though several of them have been awarded.
That's absolutely right, Jim, but we, you know, emptied our piggy bank just about on Oremadre. So measure P will help us rebuild it up until we, and it took us years to save that money.
Right, and, and we need to see, there's projections of what we're, the revenue that's going to be created. Let's get the actual revenue. Build up some, build up a war chest. And then-
So, you know, we can kind of go into the next one too, which is this frequency review. Since this is the first year in, well, so two things, I guess. The, the tax goes into effect in April, and there's three months. And I've been suggesting we just reserve that money. If you guys all agree that we're really talking about the next 12 months after that. And, you know, maybe for the first year, maybe it's, maybe we should get really specific with percentages or, I mean, you could say, you know, seventy to eighty percent or, you know, but be fairly specific. And like Jim just said, we'll see how it goes the first year, and see, and then we can go from there.
So we could put the three months in this fiscal year into capital reserve, which we need to build back up anyways to, you know, we approved some guidelines for what we'd commit to there. And then go with the, if we went with the percentages, we'd obviously have to review it more often. You know, as we saw the picture-
Basically say this first year, maybe special year, let's, and again, we're going to go into the budget soon anyways. We'll, we'll kind of take what you guys say tonight and feed that into the budget.
One of the, one of the hesitations I have with, with getting really specific about the percentages is that I don't want to get wrapped around the axle so that we can't be smart and, and do the right thing with the money. And make promises to ourselves and others that we may be ultimately unable to meet for any number of reasons. Like Jim is pointing out, we don't know what the revenue's going to be yet. We have this estimate that a consultant gave us. And, you know, we put, we put stock in that, you know, he said it's almost 600,000 bucks a year. It's going to start in April, so we'll have April, May, and June, and that ends the fiscal year. So I like the idea of just, you know, agreeing that, put that money in the bank, that, that first three months. And then the, the notion of, again, you know, prioritizing, you know, seventy to seventy-five percent or something, streets and roads, and then we talk about the rest. You know, just, again, directionally, communicating that we're right where we said we were going to be in terms of prioritization. We're not changing anything, but we're not going to get so locked in that the discussions we're having, we, we can't get where we need to be because we said, oh, well, we only have this much here and this much here. The world just doesn't work like that. So I think as a community and as an oversight committee, which we'll be talking about here in a minute, I think you want to hold our feet to the fire in terms of those priorities that we established, streets and roads being number one. But I don't think we want to be into the, well, seventy-five percent here and three percent for this and eight percent. I, I don't think we want to get into much of that. That's just, from a management perspective, I don't know how we'd do it. As soon as we said something, it would change a month later. And just kind of, final thing here, I'll be quiet. This, the, the process really will happen in the budget creation process on an annual basis. Once we know how much we can rely upon in terms of revenue from measure P, then public works at all can really start figuring out, well, how much could we spend then on this? And how much could we spend on that? At this point, like Jim's pointing out, we don't really know if it's going to be that much or a hundred thousand less. And that can make a big difference in a town like this, small street versus large street, all that kind of business. So I would hope that when we get to the oversight committee business, it's, it's really, the notion is to hold our feet to the fire in terms of, directionally, are they doing what they said they're going to do, that being us? Not, well, is it seventy-five percent or eighty percent? Because none of us is smart enough to figure that out today, is what I'm trying to say.
If we use the terms up to, like for streets and roads, if we use the term up to seventy to seventy-five percent. If we talked about fire mitigation, fire hazard, up to fifteen to twenty percent. Would, it's not just a matter of semantics, it provides that leeway. But still adheres to the priorities that we said we would pay attention to. But it also show that, yes, the streets and roads are getting the highest priority. Up to, I believe, adds-
Myself, I, I wouldn't be inclined to, when, when we talk about fire mitigation, once again, we're not really, we're talking about, what was the term, Tom?
Vegetation.
Vegetation, management. And that's, you know, how much does that cost? How much is already being taken care of? You know, we don't know the answer to those things. So to start allocating money for it in terms of real dollars and cents, which is what a percentage does, I wouldn't know how to start.
That's the feedback that we got back from our voters.
Right, but to that point, Julia, I'm much more interested in getting something done than showing something. And, you know, if we have a up to such and such, you know, I understand what you're saying, but again, to what Dan said, that, I'm pointing at Martin Ryan right now. The oversight committee and the public's job and our responsibility is to, to stick to the, the capital improvements, you know, in our town. Let's, the other thing we have to consider besides mother nature and feeling infrastructure, picking the projects themselves, is grants, you know, we've got people poking around grants. And let's, this is not truth or based off of anything. But let's just guess or pretend that we found some source of money for Eureka Mine. Well, guess what? You know, that's a place where we've identified needing a pedestrian access to town. That kind of is parky. Cleaning up all of that would be a huge fire mitigation, you know, improvement. There's a road there, you know? So the, the projects, we have to be open enough that we can, you know, get as much as possible for our town.
No, I'm not trying to lock down dollars. I'm trying to just say, okay, if these are our three areas, here's, here's how I feel kind of where the percentages or rough general percentages could go.
I think to the direction versus percentage with regard to Jim's point, we don't have a dollar amount. So how can you be taking a, well, but I'm saying, like, if we're trying to achieve things and we don't know how much money there is, we don't have a fair guide on, on what we're going to need. So it's kind of like picking, we just don't have any guideline or, or history, rather.
So, you know, as you guys talk, everything's really capital, except for the vegetation management piece. So I was thinking, well, you could say seventy-five percent streets and the rest goes into a capital reserve. You know, and that reserve could be used for matching grants for capital. So it kind of gets you there. You know, Dan and I, I think as we go into the budget, we really do need to figure out how much some of this vegetation management's going to cost. You know, and we need to be able to do it, whether we have access to CAL FIRE or not, so. And again, as we talk about code enforcement in this area, you know, having some seed money there might help too, is what I'm thinking, because there'll be a delay in getting paid back.
I think the recent events emphasize the need for strict code enforcement of the existing codes that we have in regards to fire mitigation and lot clearing.
Yes, I don't know if you, what I was saying was if we'd start doing that, you know, we're going to end up, probably the city will end up paying for a crew to go clean somebody's lot, and then we're going to bill them for it. And then we're going to have to collect on that, so there may be some-
That, that would be a very, in my mind, a very good use of measure P revenue to do that lot clearing that doesn't, that homeowners have failed to do. Get it done, but that requires, you know, upfront cost to the city. That'd be a good source, I think a good use of the money.
It could almost be like a revolving fund though, like-
Right, it could be used for this, this year, that, the next year, that kind of thing.
And that can also be money that, because we do now have a source of revenue for capital needs, all of the money that we, you know, kind of squeezed out and scrimped and saved out of the budget in prior years to put in our little piggy bank to do projects like Oremadre, we can spend on having a more robust vegetation management program. And, you know, doing what we have to do with CAL FIRE and then, you know, setting that program up. Because it's not a capital thing. But it's desperately needed, you know, and-
I think we're at the point that if we don't seriously address that and put teeth in it, like you all mentioned, it's just not acceptable after what just happened.
That's still coming back, Tom, right? We talked about that a couple months ago and had a general discussion.
Where, where do we go from here? How, do you want specific language? Do, how do you-
Yeah, I was trying to say, I was kind of flipping and saying, should we do a specific range for this year?
Seventy-five, twenty-five, we're, you know, seventy-five roads, streets and roads, twenty-five capital. And it would be a discussion point about which, which thing are we going after? Something like, I could live with that to, to start us off.
But the twenty-five is capital, not, you know, other stuff.
Right. Yeah, it's not just anything. Because it's sitting in the general fund. That's the problem. We don't want to get into that problem because it's in the general fund. Now we're using it for stuff that isn't capital improvement. That's not acceptable. That's not what we're going to do.
But these funds can be tricks. I mean, just say, okay, you brought in 500,000 dollars. We want to see where that 500,000 dollars is.
I didn't hear anything about fuel mitigation when you said seventy-five, twenty-five.
Twenty-five would, you know, well, Tom was talking about the, the twenty-five could include some of that.
Well, but that's what I was trying to clarify, it's-
Not if we call it capital.
Because fire mitigation is not capital improvement or capital investment.
So we can't.
That's all I'm saying.
No, fair enough. No, fair enough.
Is it, if we set up a revolving fund, is that kind of a capital investment? I mean, it would seem to be if you set up something lasting, right? For the, by the revolving fund, I'm talking about the money we'd use to do the abatement and then build the people back. It's building a capital program, really.
Oh. I see what you're saying, yeah.
We need, we need an attorney to answer that question.
But, you know, again, again, back to the public and to the people that have spoken before, feel free to come back up if the thought crosses your mind. I think you see what we're wrestling here with, which I think is the same motivation you guys have. We're just trying to figure out how to frame it where we don't limit ourselves from being able to do something, so.
Al, just one, one second now, Dan?
Yeah, I, I think there are some projects that we could definitely call capital. You know, like there are some areas that we really do need to go in there and just treat it like a capital project as a one-time thing. But then after that, there's going to be maintenance involved with it. So it, it can be both, you know? It, it doesn't have to be one or the other, but there's not as many capital projects. I would hope that once we got through a bunch of those, we would not have, and they would, it would turn into maintenance.
Exactly.
Trying to do.
Which would not need its own huge budget.
Sir, so as I understand it, it took about 10 years to get the 600,000 for Oromadre? Is that about right? Something like that? I think those are some of the numbers that I had heard.
It took a long time because we were fixing other things in the in-between. So it, it wasn't all of the revenue from 10 years.
Yeah, well, whatever that source was, if that could go toward the fire mitigation, you could say you got 50 to 60.
That's SB 1 money.
I'm sorry?
It was SB 1 money mostly, that we, it's road money, that, that's all we get from the state. So that has to go in that bucket.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the thoughts that I had about if you don't have some definitive numbers like 75, 25, it, it, it puts whoever's on the Oversight Committee in a tough position to hold somebody's feet to the fire. Because if it's too loosey-goosey, what do you say, you know, why, why did you spend only 38 or 48% on the roads when your goal is to have? If you have a goal of 75, then that's what you have. That's your goal of 75. But otherwise, it puts, to me, the Oversight Committee in a tough position. And I don't want to put Martin on the spot here, but, and maybe, maybe it comes from having been in law enforcement, and he was in law enforcement, and we're more rigid in that regard. And so, but it's just where I come from.
Yeah, thank you.
The issue, whether it's cap or not, I, I understand it is, may have is wrong, but the fire chief goes out, says your weeds are a problem, clear them. I don't do it. The fire chief needs money to go out and clear them, and he doesn't get his money back for up to five years. All right, he can issue a lien on the property and the property owner can scofflaw it for five years. And then the, they can go ahead and turn to a collection agency or put a lien on the property when it's sold. But in fact, that's a revolving fund of assets, money due to the city, all right? I don't know how valid that is, but it seems to me the issue is, if you can't do anything that bites the homeowner for five years, it's kind of a joke, you know? Let's, let's make some bite to it, because there's people out there who just ignore this stuff, all right? And then, and when the, the fire hits it and the winds are up, oh, well, should've, could've, would've. You know, but again, the money to do it, the, the fire department needs it to go out and do it, because they hire somebody to bring it in. And if they don't have the funds to make it happen, it doesn't. So I would say, you know, in terms of where the money comes from, it's basically provided by that homeowner somewhere along the line, but there's a five-year latency in picking it up. And if you turn it to a collection agency, you probably get, what, 50 cents on the dollar? So anyway, that's my point. Ramp it up, make these people get it done.
Well, and just to add a further layer of confusion, since you're relatively new here, our fire department doesn't, it doesn't work within the function of the city. It's the Sutter Creek Fire Protection District, which is... Right, we do have to work together and we did.
I'm not sure about that, and we're getting pretty deep in it.
It goes on the property tax rolls.
Right, like our, you know, our wastewater, we collect that year. I, I don't know if we can do something similar, like goes on the property tax roll.
I believe we, we can.
Yeah. But this is a, yeah, it likely be the city hiring the people, but we're getting into the details of this program, but, yeah. So, so again, we need to come back with how we're going to enforce weed abatement. And, you know, maybe, maybe we should, we could say something like the 75, 25 for now to feed into the budget process. We will also look at our budget and see what we think weed abatement's going to cost and see if we can fund that from some other source, or if we need to fund from this source, we'll bring that back to you guys. But I think, you know, when Jackson implemented their weed abatement, there was more than they had money for, so, you know, they basically put a cap on it the first year and then they kind of ramped it up. So I'm imagining, whatever we do, we're going to probably set a cap on how much money we can, you know, put to that in year one.
But that brings us back to our agenda item.
Well, so I'm suggesting that we kind of go down the route you guys were headed. 75% streets, 25% capital reserve, and a commitment from us that we will, as part of the budget, have a weed abatement program in the budget.
Jim, does that satisfy you?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm Barbara Combs, 284 California Drive, and I have a simple request. There's probably history to it that I don't know about, but pedestrians would really appreciate in doing these, these street projects, if you could add some crosswalks and perhaps a stop sign at the intersection of Hanford and Main Street. There's, there are no crosswalks there and, and it's, you know, there's no, there's stops on, there are three streets that come together, two have stop signs, but one doesn't. So it's, it's a little dicey. And we have a lot of visitors here that aren't familiar, you know, with the corner, stop sign and pedestrian crossings would really help. So it's just, you know, it's very specific, I realize that, but keep it in mind.
Thank you, taking notes over here. We're taking notes over here, thank you.
So with the, with the language you suggested, Tom, of 75% for streets and roads, 25% for capital reserve, would there be language in there to include in as a priority the vegetation management and fire risk?
No, she's saying that they'd give us a commitment, that they'll, they'll put that somewhere in the budget. Right?
Yeah.
I can live with that.
Okay, Clara Buckett.
Do you want us to vote on this part or move on?
Uh, I think we should move on.
Okay, so two, I think we kind of touched on that in the beginning here, because we need to see what we actually bring in and how it worked and what projects we have and what grants we've had. We'd evaluate this, well, I mean, we do evaluate this every year, because it's all part of the budget process, but we could evaluate the allocation annually for now. So that's kind of what I heard, do you guys agree?
That's, needs to happen, yeah.
Jim, Susan? Tom, you good?
Yep.
Okay, Oversight Committee.
Tom, you want to set the stage for this discussion?
Yeah, and again, this is based on my experience. I didn't, I didn't check with Derek on this, but, so again, there's a question of the, again, what you want the committee to do? Do you want it to be brown acted or not brown acted? I believe if you guys choose the members, then they have to be brown acted. If you guys make recommendations and I pick the committee, then I don't think it has to be brown acted. But if they're not going to meet outside of council meetings anyways, it may not matter. And so as a question of, you know, what is this committee going to do? We, you know, we get pretty detailed in our budget and then we stick to that budget. So I really see the budget process as the key point where they should review and kind of weigh in. So kind of my suggestion here was, you guys decide on how many people you want in this committee. I was suggesting maybe three or five, that they would be, they would receive all the budget materials and they would come to the council meetings where the, this local sales tax is discussed. And kind of like you did tonight, you'd, you'd have a lot of public comment and they could weigh in. I think the only thing, you know, one wrinkle with that is there are three or five people who haven't met, talked to each other necessarily, right? They're, they're commenting and participating with you guys in the council meeting. You know, but again, I'm trying to strike a balance between, you know, process and.
Right, right.
You know, efficiency, I guess.
Well, I could start with, I think the number five is a good number. Anybody think otherwise or want to talk about that?
I agree.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't see it anymore than that. I was actually thinking three to four, going even, you know, against the grain, keeping it, keeping it smaller. I mean, the focal point is probably going to be pretty clear. Is the money being spent or put where it's supposed to be? So I'm, my thinking is five people seems like a lot just to make sure, to ensure.
Yeah, I hear you.
That we're doing what we're doing.
I hear you. Let me give you a little more background about my thought process. I think, and Martin, I look forward to, if you care to comment on any and all of this, I think one of the primary functions of the group is going to be not only oversight and, you know, but then communication back into the community. And I think that if we have five folks, that's a better opportunity to make sure that various groups of people throughout the city are brought up to speed by the committee so that everybody knows, you know, we had the meeting, here's, here's what happened, here's what we're concerned about, here's what we're okay about. I'm afraid if you only have three and if one decides they're not really all that interested, now it's sitting on two people's shoulder to make sure all that happens. So to me, it's not just an oversight, it's a communication piece that happens next.
And I think what I was thinking is three besides Martin. So I was thinking more along the size of four. Three in a, in a committee is, yes, I agree, pretty non-functional. So, four, four to five. As far as the selection, I don't know if Martin has given this much thought and, and how and who he would like and kind of the parameters. Maybe we could get some ideas.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Martin Ryan, President of Sutter Creek and volunteer chair to the Oversight Committee. It's an honor, number one, to, to be included in this process. And I think it's terribly important that the message gets out to the community that they're, that they're getting what they're, what they're asked to step up and vote for. And when you have a 67% of yes vote on anything, that's quite a mandate. And I think there's an obligation to make sure that, however we communicate, however we get the information out, that it's done in such a manner that they feel comfortable with the process. I'm a fan of, of five, plus myself. I, I think that's a good number. I, I agree with Dan with regards to outreach to the community. And I think more community members that are involved, that know people that know people that know people, then the message gets out a lot faster and clearer to the different groups. And so I think that's very important to, to have that done in that manner. As far as the selection of the committee members, I was kind of waiting for direction from the council with, as to what your preference is, whether there are people that you want to come up with, people that I may know. There's a broad base of people here, some tremendous talents, some tremendous backgrounds, business and otherwise, in this city that can contribute. And some people can contribute, you know, with roads and those kind of things and others with other aspects of this particular measure. But I think it's important that we have a broad spectrum of people involved. And so I would take direction from the council with regards to how you want to proceed with the selection of the members.
Martin, did I hear you say yourself plus five more or you plus four more?
Myself as the chair and then five, the voting members.
Five total, okay.
Six total, but, but five voting members.
So voting members would imply, and, and that is not wrong, but we haven't gotten to that part yet, that there, that the group would meet independently to come up with, I suppose it would be like the Planning Commission, come up with one recommendation to give the council, which sounds fine anyways, but my, one of my biggest priorities in this process is I'd like it all to happen at meetings, whether it's the Advisory Committee just participating in our budget meetings, which happen in here and on there and are recorded. Or if it's your own meetings, that if you had your own meetings, I would think that they would have to be noticed and opened and recorded. And the reason for that is, you know, and you know this, Martin, the way this all works is if we all have all of the same information. And, you know, especially when the budget comes through, we all need to look at the same thing. This council isn't even operating with a finance committee anymore. We used to have a couple council members that would go so deep into the budget process and then bring it back to everybody. But in order to do that right, those two council people would have to reiterate everything that was done to the whole council, and that's not practical. So originally going into this, I had liked the idea of having it all happen in here. And then the, the second part of that is the, besides us having all the same information, is the transparency and the avoidance of misinformation. You know, we don't want the, the rumor mill of my brother's uncle's dog is on the Advisory Committee and he said that they didn't listen to anything, you know? I'd like this to all happen like this. So then, when you said voting members, you know, I thought, again, much more something like the Planning Commission where you did vote to bring us a recommendation, just like any subcommittee of a board. And I'm not married to either. I guess I would just like whatever it is to happen in open, noticed meetings.
Martin, is your, is your mic on?
Yes, we're back, okay. So I think that, that having the voting members, as I was talking about, is basically, can we come to an agreement that these funds are being spent accordingly and in compliance with the measure? That's the vote, you know, are we doing things correctly? And may have a disagreement with how this money was spent, how it was allocated. If not, then that's the report, is that we looked at the numbers, we decided collectively that it was being spent appropriately on this particular project and it met all the criteria of the measure. That's the vote. It's not an up or down, yes or no on anything. It's more or less, are we meeting the guidelines as set forth in the measure?
Do you think, and there's a lot of budget meetings, do you think in the interest of efficiency for all of us, and again, maintaining that we all have the same information, you could fulfill that process at our regular meetings during the budget cycle? Even if maybe one or two of them. Even if maybe one or two of them, it seems like every year I've done this, our, our budget process changes a little bit. You know, we either kind of workshop it or the number of meetings. But maybe there's a kind of a public hearing within our meeting, within the public hearing that happens for the budget that's with us. You know, to, to give us that yay or nay.
Certainly, I think that's, I think that's very appropriate to do.
I'm looking at you too, Al, because you were very much a part of Measure P and I, I'm not sure if, I don't know your role in the Advisory Committee. But does that feel true to what we've all, what we were all talking about?
Claire, so are you saying they wouldn't have a separate meeting or they would?
I would say probably not, because if we're doing it right, it's all of the exact same stuff as at our meeting. And it's a tremendous amount of work and time. Plus, I've found that, you know, if we're all in the meeting together, you tend to get, as you bounce ideas off of each other, you know, you all become more informed and learning within each of your silos. So if you got, you know, budget staff reports to the five or six of you and we got budget staff reports to the five or six of us and then we, you know, met somewhere down the road and tried to communicate that, it's just a kind of a wasted opportunity and communication in my mind. But that's just.
Claire, let me just add, if, if it's all right to, I, I agree with what you're, you're saying here. And I, I think if, if you guys are nodding, that, that's really the, the best approach. Particularly, let's say we have three different sessions, but, you know, on the budget development, right? So three different sessions. Well, I mean, whatever. So you come and like you said, within that meeting, each time there's an opportunity for the committee to react. And, and we hear that and then we go away and we go to the next iteration and we come back, we talk, you know, we do whatever.
I mean, I think you guys are the elected representatives of the city.
Right.
And I think we're talking about the discussion of the local sales tax portion of the budget only, right?
Yes, yeah. That's all we're talking about, not the entire budget. We're talking about the dollars that are generated by Measure P.
And I think again, it's really important to say, I, I like the way you described it, like you don't want a committee of fi- of five. And I, and I suggest you stay with an odd number if they're going to vote, just so they don't have ties. But, yeah, I don't think you want them voting on, is it sixty-nine percent or seventy percent?
No.
You know, it's, does this comply or not?
Does it comply or not? Yeah. And in the meantime, you're providing us feedback for our consideration as we develop this budget. Because what, the goal is, we want to get to the end where we're all approving a budget that is spending the money that the committee has nodded favorably towards, saying, yep, that represents what they were talking about.
Exactly.
That's, that's the end game, I think.
Don't forget that this is all a work in progress and we can try it one way.
Yep.
And then do it a different way if we have to.
Great point, Jim. Yeah, great point.
Either way it works out is seem, and what y'all figures most effective. But for some reason, to me, it seems like it might be more efficient and not take as much time for that committee as well as adding time to the meetings to discuss it and like pull attention away. What if we did the first, we have the first version of the budget? And then that, we kind of allot the money how we're thinking and that is that spec, would you call it a specific big fund?
So by the time they come, they have something to react to?
Yeah, so they get that and then they meet as a body. So they have a time to discuss it without this whole big meeting. And then they come, I, I mean, I don't know if it would be, they appropriate to have them at the first, third and fifth meeting or how, but it just seems like it's to, to let them spend time in a publicly noticed meeting might make it all more efficient.
So you mean a separate meeting just for the Oversight Committee?
Yeah, so it's more of like an, an audit, you know, that they're looking at what, like here's the budget. Okay, now it goes to them, they take some time with it, look at it, make sure that it's along the lines of what we said with Measure P and then they come back to us and, and make a recommendation. This seems fit or not fit, instead of like trying to add five more people to the conversation about each, how each dollars then.
What about? What about, we developed the first cut and Mason, you know, from the, the city staff, the finance guy and one member of the council or something, do meet with you all separately and walk you through it. Let you know, here's how much we're anticipating getting, here's what we're suggesting, so that you don't come in cold and have to, is that kind of where you're going with it?
Yeah, I, I just think that makes more sense.
But is that a public meeting?
Yeah.
Ask.
Is that a public meeting?
So does that go to the, the Brown Act question?
Well, I, yeah, I was saying Claire saying she wanted a public.
Right, wants to make sure that everybody's hearing the same thing.
Yeah, I think, I, I, if we did it that way, I would think it would need to be a public meeting, which I think rather than, I hear what you're saying, Susan, you're talking about, you know, creating a draft budget and then giving it to them as an audit. But I would rather have them be, you know, obviously we're the voting body here, but I'd rather have them be a part of the process as we build along, you know, the, the bigger, the bigger project rather than with the idea that you would be more likely to, you know, approve of what we come up with if we're building it together with, you know, our feedback along the way. Because for all of us sitting here, one of the, the hardest parts of the job is to hear everybody, you know? And I, I know we all endeavor to, but a lot of times we hear the same people and we hear the loudest voices. And to my opinion, one of the greatest things about having you guys here is to, and I, I hope it's a broad swath of the community. I hope it's not five people that we see here, you know, several times a year, no offense, Al. But, you know, I think having that input will help product.
Can't you do both though? I mean, let them have a, a public meeting after the draft budget is produced and then they participate in the, the next.
I was thinking, as long as it's public. The other way around, have an orientation with the council and with the Oversight Committee. Or have them get at least an idea of how the process is done. And then go to, I like, I like Jim's idea of then of being able to have both ways. But they all have, but again, with an emphasis on all being public.
Oh, absolutely.
So.
The only, the only thing from my perspective on this is that I don't necessarily want the Oversight Committee members getting too engaged and involved in your other budget business. So that we are narrowly focused on the Measure P money, where you folks decide to allocate that, the projects you assign that to. That's, that's what our job is, that. The rest of the budget.
I was just thinking of an orientation to let them, your members know, the committee know, you know, here's, here's how the, the general budget works. Here's how this portion, which you're going to be focused on, is a part of that. So, so you're really kind of defining the parameters from the get-go, but understanding the whole process.
I would have no objections to an orientation for committee members that together with city manager and whatever budget folks you have or representatives, all of you or just, just a representative, to go over that process, just so.
I think that's important for them to understand.
Just so they're generally familiar with how it works.
And couldn't we do that as an agenda item at a meeting?
Yeah, but, but again, I think, you know, I think it's important if, if you're just focusing on Measure P funds.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think it's going to be that complicated. It's not like getting oriented.
I agree.
Yeah.
And we don't want to make it more complicated than it is.
And it's very specific too.
Right. So Julia, if, you know, they had to understand the entire budget.
No, I didn't mean the entire budget, but this is just, this is why this number, just the beginning of Budget 1A.
So I'm kind of hearing, you know, we start our budget process in council. Anybody's welcome to come. If they want to come to that, they can. They get it, we get a draft budget, we definitely send that to the Oversight Committee. We have one oversight meeting, public meeting, and then we bring it back to council. So really this committee would, would meet on its own probably once a year, right?
Does that?
And then they have the council meetings, so there might be two council meetings plus a standalone meeting. And then the budget's locked and, you know, we have audited budget and we're not going to vary from that budget. So really during the year, there's not a lot to do.
There won't be a, a lot to do this first budget cycle, this, the next budget cycle.
Yes.
Coming up.
I also noted in the, the measure that there, it calls for an annual audit of Measure P funds. So that's pretty specific to what our function would be. As to whether the auditor says this money is being spent on this project and that's appropriate, that it's spent in the way it was spent. And then our job is to say, is that project within the confines of the Measure P requirements? And that's, that's pretty narrow focus.
Right.
Yes.
And that's really, I don't need.
And hopefully we answer that's going in.
Exactly.
So not retrospect saying, oh.
Well, we'll have the, an audit that says this money was expended on these items.
And that staff would prepare that.
So it feels like we've kind of honed in on this, then the question is, how do we find these people?
Right.
And, you know, we, we have trouble finding people for the other commissions, right?
Right. So.
Are those, Martin, did you have anyone in mind?
I hadn't started that process yet. What I was wanting to get from the council was what your direction would be. I know all of you were out in the community, all of you were talking to people out there. There were people who were extremely passionate about this particular measure. And that's really, rather than just picking somebody out of a hat, people that have demonstrated a willingness to get engaged and involved and concerns about, you know, is this being, going to be done correctly? Because that's always the question with government, is it doing what they say they're going to do? And so if you have people that understand that role and that in some cases are willing to challenge when they don't think something's right, and then we can, we can go move forward from there. So I would like direction from the council with regards to proceeding on that. Or if you want to, you know, come up amongst yourselves, there's five council members. And the other, the other question with that is selecting people that the community is not going to say, well, that's Julia's buddy or that's Claire's buddy.
Sure.
That, that are representative of the community as a whole.
I have an idea that what if council members made a couple of recommendations to, to you, Tom? And maybe the two of you guys get together, go through it and go through a little selection process yourselves. And that way you're working.
They're working, they're new to it.
Together. And, but we've offered a couple of names because like you say, I've been in the community. I've got people, a couple of people have said, hey, when you do that, I'd be willing and able to, to do that.
Sure.
So I could put.
Also, I, I, I know that we're all talking about some of the same people and they're incredibly valuable to our community. But I'd like to add a couple and, you know, this is always a principle I'm trying to follow now. To add a couple, people from the outside, you know, people that are just getting involved in town, people that might be a little bit younger, you know, because we need to, to keep this going and.
Yeah, agreed.
Should we open it up and let people apply?
Take an ad out?
So we'll, we'll pick some time period, we'll try to generate a list and then Martin and I will get together and talk. And again, I, I'm suggesting five total, including Martin.
I, I, I agree. I thought, I think the five total is the right number.
Like odd numbers.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Yeah, okay.
That sounds good.
Thank you, Martin.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Martin.
Right.
Tom, you satisfied?
I think so.
Okay. Council assignments. So I put together a draft. I think I took a couple liberties after you guys saw it. Julia let me know she'd be willing to be the alternate for ATCA. And I think I already am the alternate for LAFCO, that's just not on here, it's page forty-three, Jim. And then, reading the staff report, I think my idea of the italicized ones in the bottom was not that we would assign those, like assign those tonight in perpetuity for the year, you have to go to all those meetings. But I would like to agree that those are meetings that we or staff should sometimes or often be at. And either, you know, kind of pencil in ones that we're interested in or we're frequently at anyways. And just kind of have a gentleman's or women's agreement amongst us that we will make an effort to cover some of these things. But they would not be actual assignments. That, that's what I had intended. But let's see what you guys think.
First of all, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I looked it over and, and think it's, it's also important that we have someone there at those association meetings. Whether it's Board of Supervisors, the Benefit Foundation. So I'm willing to, to sign up for two. I think sometimes if, instead of just having an, an agreement, if someone knows, yeah, my expectation is to be there, it, it's easier to follow through.
I, I think some of these organizations want to know who their liaison is. So I don't know if like leaving it open and having different council members show up is necessarily as effective as just, just putting myself in their shoes.
And that doesn't necessarily require that we would attend every meeting they ever had, right?
That's true.
You would just clarify.
You could say, I'm your liaison, if you have an issue, let me know. Yeah.
Well, and there are other circumstances, like for instance, right now I'm up to my eyeballs in the duck race. And it would be a good time for me to probably go to all of these, you know, to touch in with them as partners. So sometimes it's going to be different, you know? Maybe Jim has fire business or Italian business or whatever it is to, to share with these groups. The exception to all of them is the Board of Supervisors meeting, because I don't think any of us is going to volunteer to go to all of those. But we should sometimes go.
I would, I would volunteer at least to be the liaison or for the Board of Supervisors meeting.
I'd volunteer for the Knight Foundry Alliance.
I'm already on the Benefit Foundation board. I can do the Wine on Forty-Nine. Is there actual Vintner Business District or that's just synonym?
I think it's going to be part of the Amritsar Council Tourism.
Oh, the Heritage.
Oh, the lodging is going to be that, I think. And, and if, if nobody had volunteered for the lodging, I would volunteer for that. And I would volunteer for the visitor center if, if nobody had volunteered for that.
I put my name there just because I've been going to those meetings.
Sure, no, fair enough. Yeah, no, I could, and again, to clarify, I'm not saying I'm going to be at every one of these meetings, but I would reach out, let the people know that I could be their liaison and show up at meetings once in a while. Is that the expectation?
I think so, yeah. Julia, don't you sometimes go to business association meetings or am I imagining that? Susan, Jim?
I have not.
During school, so I really can't.
I went a couple of times, but it, it was specific to the measure.
Yeah, I've been to them, but I, I've found that Amritsar Tourism Council is more.
Well, maybe we'll leave Tom for now. Is that all right?
And I don't, I don't go to all of them either.
But some of them.
Yeah.
Okay. And then Board of Supervisors.
That's why.
You're going to, and I, I've kind of frequently been talking to our new supervisor. So, you know, I'm not attending or listening to meetings, but.
He's also on the Air Quality Board.
And Darsa now.
Okay, so I think you guys filled them all in.
I think we need to vote to approve it though, right?
Just, just for clarification, on the LAFCO, I'm, I'm an alternate.
No, I'm the alternate. Sutter Creek is the alternate on LAFCO. We're in the alternate, this, our city is in the alternate position, but you are our primary person on LAFCO. I'm the alternate.
No, I'm not a regular member. No, I'm not a regular member of LAFCO.
You're our regular member, though.
No, we don't have a regular seat. It's, we're, we're the alternate seat.
You're the regular filling into the alternate seat.
Yeah.
That's how you want to put it now.
So like, next year, when we're, I think it's our turn, you would have a seat on LAFCO, and I would be your alternate at meetings.
Next year, yes.
Yeah, so.
So Claire, you weren't, you weren't in there as the alternate? You want to be the alternate?
Yeah, we just had a mayor's selection meeting the other day, and I asked them who the alternate was, and they think it's me.
What is the city select committee?
It is when you decide who's going to be on LAFCO, is all I've ever done on it. Jim, do you know anything else? Yeah, I think that's it. They, you, mayors assemble on Zoom and vote. We just had to do it because Amador City's council person that was on LAFCO isn't on council anymore.
Okay, well, so we'll fill this in and publish it. And I think, again, pick where there's money involved. If, if the main person can't make it, they should, they should brief the alternate so they can go and vote.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, mayor and council member reports. Susan?
No, just that there's that lodging tax that's supposed to be passed, and if so, there'll be more money for Amador Tourism Council, but also whoever of us is going to the Board of Supervisors meeting, kind of like we were talking about with regard to our tax and the money already allotted, they want to make sure if approved, the money that is already being allotted to marketing through the TOT tax is still held to that account. Julie, if you're on the, at the meetings, they just want to make sure that.
Was that at your last meeting, Susan?
Today was the, they haven't had it passed yet, so once that's passed, then we just need to make sure that that TOT money stays with them.
So all we need to say is yes is staying with them.
Stays with ACT, Amador Tourism Council, yeah.
I think the, the county funds ACT today, they won't, they don't want that funding to stop.
Right. So it's not our funds that they're talking about. Okay, Jim?
No.
I have two, so I'll wait. Julia?
We had an Air Quality Board meeting today, and we just selected new members, talked about the governor's large engine diesel ban revoked. So it was actually pretty benign. We got a nice compliment from them with encouraging the trade-in of gas into electric. So Sutter Creek got a good point. We did a standing ovation. But anyway, it was nice that we're kind of at the forefront ahead of many other cities.
Dan?
The ACTC meeting that I attended earlier in the month had a long conversation about bike ped stuff, and I'm, it's difficult to report that I'm really not quite sure what the end game is still. I did talk to Tom today, and I think he and Dan are making a plan to maybe put something together and bring it up to John to see what he thinks. There was, I was confused by the reaction of some of the commissioners in terms of what they thought they may be willing to fund versus what they may not be willing to fund, so we need further clarification. So Tom and Dan are going to put something together and meet with John, and maybe I'll join you if you want me to, and see if we can get it, you know, kind of nailed down, because everybody's spent a lot of time, and that's what I told the other commissioners. I said, you know, people have been working on this for years, and now I'm not sure exactly what you're saying in terms of your willingness to fund. And they were, they just weren't clear.
Was, was it the president, who presented, John Gedney? So from our last bike ped, and maybe this isn't the, the stage to discuss, but we were pretty clear and pretty precise in what we wanted presented, so it's a little discouraging that there was confusion on what they wanted to do. So I know we have a bike ped meeting next week, so.
Oh, good. It'll be good to see what Sandy has to say about her reaction to that meeting.
Oh, Sandy Staples.
Because she was sitting there.
Okay, my turn. We had ARSA last week for the first time in a little while, and it was mostly a welcome and kind of recap to the new members, which were the two new supervisors. And then it also had that water balance report that you guys had already heard, and Jim was there, but I just wanted to share that because it was sort of a review, it really dawned on me that I feel like we've come a really long way in the last year or so, and really breaking down the system, understanding the components, you know, identifying the problems, having real numbers for, you know, a lot of the data, and not to say that those efforts haven't been made for years and years and years, it just felt like we've been making a lot of progress. And even so, when you look at the, the warrants and the Public Works Report and all the stuff we're doing at the existing plant, it doesn't feel as much like the huge never-ending laundry list of broken pieces. It seems like we're actually improving some things, and I just wanted to compliment Dan and Tom, Public Works on that. And then also, the duck race is in full swing, so duck race tickets are on sale. One of the major impetus signs the event is to have a nonprofit fair, so we invited Sutter Creek nonprofits first to, at no expense, to come to the ball field and do their thing, sell something or share their information or have an activity, and we're basically full. Tom's been working with us, he's been really helpful in terms of support from the city with, you know, the park, and I expect thousands and thousands of people. It's been a crazy response. So be there. I hope you guys judge.
We need some rain.
We need some rain, yeah, that's, that's pretty much the hitch. We've got ducks from the Native Sands. It's really everything I had kind of dreamed in terms of everybody who wanted to come in together to do this. The groups are in the ball field, the Native Sands are helping, the Benefit Foundation's helping, the Rancheria gave us some cash, the city's on board, the schools, both schools are selling tickets, the wood shop's cutting out the plywood ducks, the art department's painting them, you know, it's really a whole community thing. That's it. Did the attorneys report? You have to buy a duck, Derek. Future agenda items? Anybody? Nope. Any questions on information and correspondence?
I had, I had one. Maybe Mason might be able to help me or Tom. In looking through the invoices and the, and the audits, some big numbers came up. I'm curious if the police report, which is for November, coincides with the invoices for, say, for the fuel. So the police report was for November, are these invoices for that same period as the police report? Yes? Okay.
That warrants are for December thirty-first, right?
Yeah, but the, the Huntsons Fuel invoices are usually for prior month activity, so it would have been November, November invoices sent to us by mid-December, and we would have paid them. Then they're on that, in that time.
Okay.
So it would have been November time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's only one.
Okay.
Okay.
That lines up.
Hey, Mason. While, while you're there, let me ask you a question, if you don't mind.
I don't mind. I'm here.
If, if you, if you know the answer to this, under the building permit income and the number of building permits and all that?
Yeah.
I, I couldn't understand, was the fourteen hundred and eighty-three bucks, are we less this year than last year or more? I couldn't, I read it five times, and I said, I just got to ask him. So you find out, and let me know when you, when you find out. I couldn't figure it out. It was, well, for me, it was confusing.
I think we're running ahead of building permits and building activity. Building activity seems to be picking you up.
Right. I just couldn't make heads or tails of the statement. And is it time to continue asking questions if we haven't? I just had one more for Dan. Hi, Dan. Dan, you're talking about the rotostreators and doing, getting three and four back online?
Yep.
So is that, what's the, is that going to enable you to work on one and two?
Or, what's the advantage of getting three and four back online? They've been off for so long, right? It's mainly for storms, so it's for overflow. One can handle all of our waste, but, you know, it's like all of your solids going to one area.
Okay.
And so if you split it into two, then two are easier to clean and make sure that they don't get clogged up. That's kind of what, what happens. So we had one and two running, then two split its shaft. So now we have three and four back, so three and four, one of those or two of those we'll have in by the month or so.
Is best case scenario to have all four running?
It would be. I don't think I've ever heard of that happening, so.
That's what I'm wondering about.
I, I think we've had three has been the, the top that we've had at one point.
Okay. And let me finish with Dan, just real quick. Dan, I wondered, does, and I think Claire, I mentioned this to you, does, does Jackson have a street sweeper?
I'm not sure if they do, actually.
I think I own those, but I don't know about Jackson.
I was, I was just wondering, because one of the issues that we continue to have is, you know, to try to keep the leaves off, the deal and all that kind of stuff. And I was just wondering if somebody around here has one, and if we have a striping machine or something, maybe we could swap or something. Because, you know, it's not being used every day.
Yeah.
And maybe there's a way, that'd be a nice way to kind of work together and accomplish some.
Yeah, I, I have a, a note on my, my plate to go talk to the new Public Works Director down at ION, so I will, I will definitely talk to him about that.
Appreciate it.
Well, and I had talked last year to the then mayor about, you know, Public Works getting together and sharing things like that, and they were really receptive, but.
Yeah.
It's getting it done.
New person now.
Keep in mind, though, a street sweeper would have to be trailered between the locations.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
The logistics are pretty complicated.
It's a little, yeah, it's a little more than, I mean, I think I had started looking into it and then realized it was pretty complicated, and then just kind of it got on the back burner, because there's other things, but, yeah, we will definitely look into that.
I'm back. So basically, what I'm trying to summarize in this little blurb here is that last year, we had nine building permits total, we have twelve this time, so we have more permits.
Right.
However, they're smaller projects, and so we actually got less money.
The revenue this year is less.
Correct. So, yeah, for the month of December, we had more permits, but they were smaller projects, so they were less money.
Thank you for clarifying that. The final thing I've got on my deal is, Tom, I saw, and Dan, I saw that we got the ten thousand dollar grant from the Amador Air District, and Julia mentioned it. So I was wondering, are we still talking to them about the potential of down the road or whatever, any kind of charging down at the end of the, the parking lot down there and, and solar and all that stuff?
Yeah, we're, I don't, I don't know how much money, I don't think the two were the same pot. I think there's a different pot for the, for the electric charging versus this small gas engine replacement program. So, yeah.
Yeah, the air district only had sixteen thousand dollars for EV. It's going to, so we're talking to other people.
Okay, great. Good.
That's not really enough.
Yeah. No, it's not. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, unless I'm missing something, nope, we're going to adjourn into closed session after recess.
Okay.
What's that? They've been doing it for a while.
I mean, I could go through, go to close.
I don't know, it's been doing it for a while.